All right. Good evening, everybody. It's a little after six thirty and I wanted to call the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. On February fifteenth at six thirty, uh, call to order. Um, Allison, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Carol.
Here.
Councilmember Hara.
I'm here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Candell.
I am here.
Mayor Paulson.
I'm here. And for those of you who are able, please rise and let's do our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. And the next item on our, our agenda tonight is public comment. And this will be only for matters not listed on the agenda. So tonight will be, um, well, we will skip over, uh, item three and be talking, uh, mostly about, um, the storm drain master plan and measure G. So anything not related to that. Uh, if you're in the chamber and would like to make comment, please come to the mic.
Good evening, Mayor Paulson, council members. It's kind of on the agenda, but I want it off the agenda. I would like to request, uh, that item four point nine be pulled from the consent calendar and be, uh, agendized for a full public meeting. So the members of the public can comment.
Okay, so we would do that later, but that's fine. So now that you've said that Dennis will.
I didn't know.
That's fine.
Speak.
That, that you, you know, it works. No, no problem. So we'll, uh, we'll note that when we get to the consent calendar, um, so on any other items, anyone want to comment? We, I guess, uh, Dennis is the only one here in the chamber. Allison, do we have anyone on Zoom who?
We do, and I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members on Zoom. And there's no public comment.
Okay, so we'll, um, close public comment then and go to our next, uh, agenda item, which is presentations proclamation. So we were going to do, um, uh, two items. Three point one was the Larkspur twenty twenty annual greenhouse gas submission inventory. And three point two was the Marin Countywide Electric Vehicle Acceleration Strategy. Um, unfortunately, our presenter is not available tonight, so we're going to reschedule that. So, um, with that, I don't know if there are any comments. I think we'll just wait till it's on the agenda. I, it sounds like council member Carol, you had something?
Yeah, I do actually. Um, Mr. Muller did submit a, um, very eloquent letter. And I read through the report. Uh, the materials that were presented and, and there were a couple of questions I'd like to address when it is presented to us. And I really don't see concrete steps that we as a council can take included in this and information that I as a council member would like to, to know. And that is, um, who our biggest electrical users in our jurisdiction are. And whether or not they're using green or deep green electricity. Like ready mix, Bon Air Shopping Center and, uh, their apartment, um, and Larkspur Mart. And what if any plans they might have in the future to add solar panels or trying to mitigate, our greenhouse gas emissions and within our jurisdiction. I use the ready mix plant too, for another point, and that is, I think it's our biggest industrial user, and I counted seventeen heavy duty diesel trucks. And I'm curious if they would be interested in using biodiesel. Uh, if that does reduce emissions, which I believe it does. I know the port of Oakland is just introducing, uh, requiring some of those trucks that go in and out, uh, to use hybrid vehicles and or all electric trucks, which are in development and are very expensive, I know. But I'm just curious if these users are, have any plans to, um, try to reduce their greenhouse gases. Uh, and what we can do to, is what are the malls planning as far as having electric charging stations? And are they interested in doing things like what Red Red High School has done with the solar panels? And that's something that we can do on our facilities, but these are our biggest electrical users, I think. And I think we should at least know what their plans are in the future. So I'd like to see that included in that presentation.
Okay, so, so again, it's, it's, uh, we're not going to be able to talk about it tonight, but I think those are fair questions and it was public comment. And I'm not sure city manager, if there's anything more we can do with that. I was going to just postpone until you re-agendize it.
I'd be happy to take those questions up. I heard them, so we'll note them. I may have to invite M C U to come back and I'm not familiar with what's public record and not public record about people's utility elections for deep green and green. It's not my area, so I'll find out. Um, I'll just quickly note the school district, that was all paid for by the state. So, um, I'm sure that every business in town would put more solar panels up if the state paid for them. But I, I could certainly invite somebody from the school district to come talk about that process if that would be helpful to the, to the council. The intention at the end of the presentation, I can tell you as a preview is, is to tell you what the work program is that the staff then needs to bring back to you. But as you've already alluded to, council member Carol, we're, and I think the letter that you received from the public comments on this, we're reaching, we're rapidly reaching the maximum of what the city itself can actually do. And a lot of it now has to shift to the public, making their own elections and choices. So, but, um, we will make note and we'll see what we can collect for you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any other council members on this? I guess we do know it's going to come up again, but maybe to prepare differently. Okay, then, uh, let's move on then from item three, which is being postponed and, um, to the approval of the consent calendar. So, um, uh, Mr. Gilardi has already requested, um, pulling four point nine, I believe, uh, for, for discussion at least. Let's get to that. Uh, any other council member want to pull an item from the calendar, uh, from, from the consent calendar? Okay, um, so I, I, I'd say let's, uh, then entertain a motion to pass four point one to four point eight and four point ten. In other words, you know, the balance, uh, taking out four point nine. And, um, maybe we can have a little discussion about and decide what to do next. So, uh, does anybody want to move that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I think. I'll move it.
Okay.
I'll second, uh, approval of the consent color one, four point one to four point eight and four point nine.
And four point ten.
Four point ten, excuse me.
Okay, so Allison can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Carol.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell.
Yes.
Mayor Paulson.
Yes. Okay, so that passes, um, the balance and, uh, let's return to, uh, item four point nine. Um, and I guess, uh, Mr. Gilardi, since you brought it up, um, if there's any more.
Staff report, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, the staff report, yeah.
Thank you. Um, item four point nine is a request from the staff to have authorization to create project accounts for two projects that you essentially directed us to start so that we could provide you with the information you need to make a decision about the ultimate, or at least the short, medium and long term use of the Commons property, the property that Doherty and Rose, Rose Lane, you asked us to bring back greater specification about a potential expansion to include not just the library, but the city offices and additional meeting rooms. In order to do that analysis, so you can have that public discussion, um, which is tentatively scheduled for your March first meeting. We did need to retain some engineering support, um, and in particular, some traffic engineering support. So you have the proper information for that March one public discussion. We have grave concerns about having those charges just absorbed into the general fund and not properly documented under project funds, not just for our internal operations, but also because we have to be really careful right now with the state of California that every dollar we're spending on the Commons property is clearly demonstrated where it went to and what it paid for. And that it did or didn't have anything to do with the grant. And so, um, this approach and this request to create the project funds now, uh, helps us internally. This is actually a power that you hold that we don't hold. We don't create project accounts without authorization from the council. So, um, if you choose not to do this this evening, we've actually already retained these folks that we can make that March one public meeting informative for you. So we will pay for them. We'll pay for them out of the general fund. That one necessitate of quite a lot of paperwork, um, to make sure that we comply with the state that we otherwise would not have to do because we'd have it in project fund accounting. Um, the other thing is it won't be particularly open or transparent to the public how those dollars will spend because they'll be within the general fund. And somebody would have to actually request ledger reports from us to find these transactions, whereas they'll be clearly audited if we create these project funds.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah.
I have a question about the March first agenda item. A business item or, or a, a, a regular business item that would be?
That's our intention. It's the council's practice to take public comment and engage the public during a business item.
Okay. Um, and good, uh, I, I would love to hear from Mr. Gilardi if he wanted to, uh, kind of why we want to put this over. I mean, it sounds like we're trying to save staff a lot of work, uh, and comply with state regulations. And I'm not sure what, what the downside is, you know, could you explain to us what your concern is or, or?
Certainly. Thank you for the invite on that. I'm confused then by the staff, uh, report indicating that part of the approval will be to retain the consultants to study a new city hall. I have no problem with retention of consultants for the library. In fact, I totally support it. But as to the city hall, it's a cart before the hor- horse type situation. Uh, there has not been a public discussion, open discussion in the last few years about moving away from this city hall. And there's a number of items I could get into, uh, and I don't know if you want to go there right now. But this city hall is an office building and it houses your chambers. And as an office building, after the library moves, it will have plenty of room to house the city, uh, staff to provide services to the public. And this floor, the second floor, uh, seventy-five percent of this floor has been remodeled in the offices. New windows downstairs, new offices, library in this room minor. And the main thing has been the presentation about the cost of upgrading this city hall. It's estimated to be ten to twelve million dollars. This is a nine thousand square foot building. That's over a thousand dollars a foot. And by way of example, I just finished remodeling four eighty-nine Magnolia, which is a six thousand eight hundred square foot building, same vintage as here, two stories. We gutted that building, took the roof off, did all the seismic work, including steel, uh, reinforcement downstairs, new windows, brand new electrical uh, fire flow systems, uh, and that cost three million dollars, which is only four hundred and forty bucks a square foot. So I'm very concerned about the numbers that have been thrown around the past few years that this city hall to upgrade it is going to cost ten to twelve million dollars. A million dollars has already been spent in the last half dozen years. As I said, the windows, the painting, the dry rot, the termites. I'm sure the seismic hasn't been done. Sprinklers aren't in yet, but that's not a twelve million dollar fix.
All right. So, so Mr. Darnley, if I could ask the city manager, uh, I, I'm not sure we're, we're having a conflict here because my understanding is we haven't made a decision on what to do with city hall. We're still trying to figure that out. Is anything in four point nine contrary to us still having a public discussion about what to do with city hall and what the cost would be, things that, that, uh, Mr. Gilardi is bringing up?
Uh, I don't believe so. Uh, at the last public meeting, which I apologize, I wasn't prepared. So I don't have the date of the last public discussion of moving, which probably was about two, three months ago. Thank you, madam council member. So in October was your last public discussion. You asked a number of questions that we don't have the answers for unless we commission some help from some engineers. So that's what Mr. Skinner's done. Is commission some specialists so that when you have this public discussion, you have refined information. And so, um, by giving this authorization, you're helping us with the accounting that, but that money's going to get spent on those engineers regardless. Uh, you could decide on March first that you don't want to move forward with the city offices moving. At which time we'd probably ask for direction on commissioning the money to start analyzing this building in greater detail.
So, so let me, are you okay if I?
Yes, good, good.
Thank you. Um, so, so it sounds like, um, we have directed city staff to, uh, give us additional information. That's what they're doing right now. Is your disagreement with the people the city is choosing to hire to get our estimates from? Is that the?
No, not at all.
So, so what, what is, so, so today what we were doing basically saying, hey, instead of using the money from the general fund, let's create a special fund for you to do that for the people that you've already hired, is my understanding. And so that we can keep our accounting straight. And we're going to have this discussion about what to do with city hall. You know, in, in the future, we're not, we're not making any decisions tonight about that.
And I, I do want to just say it's not normal. Normally we wouldn't have done it in this order. It's because of the state grant, it's, it's kind of forcing us to ask you to let us do this now so that the paperwork's cleaner. Because I do worry when their auditors come in that I want the cleanest paperwork possible.
Oh, I agree. If they've given us five million dollars, I don't want them to have, find anything to complain about. You know, so I'm, I'm really would like to, uh, do everything the right way. So the, the paperwork is clean for, for the state. But I also hear your concern that we should have a public conversation about what to do with this building. How much is it really going to cost? Maybe have some outside experts. Are there people that, that you think we should hear from? You know, to have a different opinion if you disagree with the opinion we're given. But I still am leaning towards authorizing the city to create this, this fund, if that makes sense.
I'm still confused on the bookkeeping. If you need to separate an account for the monies being spent for the library, do it. If you were authorizing monies to be spent to study the movement, uh, or relocation of city hall, building a new one. That's what I'm talking about. And I think it should be publicly discussed. What's the cost of deal of the consultants relative to the city hall element?
All right. So, so let me, let me just ask city manager, because I want to make sure that I'm understanding this also. My understanding is there's, the money we were getting from the state is solely for the library. We cannot use that to move our offices or anything like that. So when you're talking about creating an account to, um, uh, for the, to keep our records clean for the state, what I'm hearing is we're creating an account for the purposes of the library, uh, moving the library, building the library, everything related to the library, not related to city hall. Am I understand that correctly?
No, um. So there's two significant things the council's already done. The first is you were very clear questions you wanted answered. For your eventual, which we've now said is next meeting, discussion about whether or not the campus at the Commons will include the city offices in the first construction phase. Mr. Skinner's made his professional determination that he needs specialists to get you the information you asked for, which was to refine some of the cost estimates. Because we've already started on the library permit, which you authorized in a separate action at a different meeting. We realized we have a paper trail problem. Because we want to make sure that every dollar's clear where it was spent and what it was spent on. So we're asking you to authorize us to create the project accounts, which is not the same as commissioning a project. And probably it's a little confusing in the staff report and I acknowledge that. We normally would have brought you the discussion on the first, and then we would have, based on what you did, come back and ask for all the accounting procedures to be authorized. We had to do it this way because we realized, oh, the state audit trail started in January and we don't want to get sideways with the state. So we want to have these different pots for each of these charges. Let's use one of the consultants, Mr. Parisi, Parisi Transportation. He's studying the entryways and the traffic that's going to go along what's Rose Lane into the property. So it's, it's one contract with him. The scope of the contract includes two parts. The traffic and parking for the library and then the additional if we were to move the city offices, because that's a question that you asked us a lot about. How much does that intensify the need for parking? So he's looking at that, but we want the state to be clear that in figuring out that answer for us, he, we kept track of the dollars that we spent on that question versus the dollars we spent on the question of the library. But I can't cogently answer you otherwise on March first or Mr. Skinner, because he's the brains, not me of what that number is if we don't have Mr. Prezy's analysis.
Got it. So, so I, I guess my, my question, and I'm sorry this is taking up so much time, is we're creating an account that's going to be for the library project and we're.
You already did that.
Okay, so that, that's done and that's an account just dealing with a library. Now there's a second account, which is not dealing with a library, which is dealing with the potential move, which, so for example, if we ask questions and one question is related to the library and one question is related to the move, we can pay from two separate accounts so that the state doesn't have an issue with us co-mingling funds.
It's the cleanest way to do it.
Okay, I understand. All right. So, so.
Um, good, sir.
Yeah, council member Carol.
Yeah, I had questions about this item, which I emailed, um, Dan the day after it was posted. Because I have the, I share your concerns, but also I had other concerns about how it's going to be done. And, um, I was satisfied with this explanation and that's why I didn't pull it on tonight's agenda. But I would like to point out that on page two, very first sentence is while the council is not yet decided about the future home of city administrative office. We're not there yet. What this tells us is that they're anticipating, it says in very bold face, which is unusual in these reports. You get a bold face inside of an item. It says staff anticipates asking that we make that decision March first. So we're just ahead of ourselves here. And I was satisfied with that answer. So we're all, I think, pretty much aware of your concerns and a lot of other citizens concerned. I've heard a lot about this, about moving the offices. And so I think it's, the staff made it very clear. Nothing in this item precludes our discussion on March first, and it's only information that we're going to have to need to make that decision March first, and that's why it's being brought up.
I hear you on that. But what we're talking about is consultants, which means the consultants have to separate their charges between the library and city hall.
And as he's explained.
He's talking about accounting, bookkeeping at this level up here. The consultants send a bill and the consultant is going to have to break out the part of the cost to deal with city hall versus the cost of the library. Being an old auditor, uh, I can accept that there's a challenge there and the bookkeeping and the availability for the state auditors. So it really has to be backed up to the consultants. That contract with them must delineate then that the charges be separated, no different than a lawyer and his billing. Uh, for his client, we've got different billing topics or accounts or actions. So if that's there, fine, we'll be able to see the, keep it straight for the library. And then if the council decides not to go forward with, uh, city hall down on that Commons property, then it's just an expense to the general fund.
Yeah, I, 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 so, so I'm sorry, just, I just wanted to thank you for, for, we're starting this discussion. I understand it and I understand your perspective. Uh, I feel comfortable that I would let, like I was just speaking for myself, I would like to authorize to have these two funds. I would like the, uh, experts to give, uh, us their opinions. Um, and in order to do that, I think the cleanest way to do is to pass this tonight in order to allow us to set up those different funds to pay them correctly. And because of that, I'm going to ask the city, uh, council not to uh, pass on this, uh, set up those funds. And then we can still have this discussion. And if it turns out we don't move city hall, we just paid people for their, uh, you know, advice and opinions and may not follow them. But I still think we should pay them. I think we should pay them the right way. And I think this allows us to pay them the right way, that.
I'm in agreement. Thank you for.
Let me, let me hear from the other council members, uh, council member.
Well, I just, I was confused by a statement that you made not to pass on what?
Uh, so, so four point nine was not passed yet. We took it off calendar. Mr. Gilardi was asking that we not pass this four point nine tonight, put it over until March. And I, after hearing all this, my thought is that we should pass this tonight. Give the city the authority to do the things that, that, that we need to do in order to keep the funds correct.
That's not what I heard you say a moment ago, but that's what you're.
That's, that was my intent. Okay.
Okay, uh, council member Way or Harf, anything else? We've heard from this side of the room. A lot. And you did a good job. I'm, I'm happy to, to let you do that. So, um.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of item four point nine, adopt resolutions nine twenty-three, ten twenty-three and eleven twenty-three per fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, so, uh, I have a motion to, um, pass the remaining consent calendar item four point nine. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, Allison, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes, but with one comment, if I could.
Sure.
Uh, I look forward to the, a robust discussion of the topic that brought Mr. Guard already here tonight. So, um, we're going to have that conversation. I look forward to it. But, uh, yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell.
Yes.
Mayor Paulson.
Yes, and similarly, I, I appreciate, I think, part of what you were saying was this needs to be a really robust public discussion. I think we all agree. So thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so with that, we have, uh, passed unanimously all ten items. And, uh, we can move on to, uh, item number five, the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I have just some calendar announcements to make sure that the council and the community are aware of. Two of them are on a, on the news flash section of the homepage of the website. So want to make sure folks visit that and read more on this information. But, uh, we've opened two significant pub- public comment periods and invite the public to review the material that's been posted and offer any feedback. Um, the first is a comment period that, uh, we're seeking written comment by March ten for the March fifteen council meeting, and that's on, uh, a reusable, uh, reusable packaging food ordinance. The city has an invitation from the county to be part of a, a broader countywide partnership. So we need to make a decision on this ordinance, uh, by May. So we're going to try to have that, uh, at your March fifteen meeting uh, for at least the first discussion from you. Uh, it's so, we would love to get public comment on that particular draft ordinance, which you can review on our website. The other, um, ordinances that are now posted to be reviewed are model green building ordinances. Um, we are asking for public, written public comment by April third, so that we can incorporate into a community workshop. It's going to occur on April nineteen. Um, these have been sort of colloquially called the reach codes by a lot of folks. So you've probably heard quite a bit about that. Five of this jurisdictions have passed some version of the reach codes already. And others are in deliberations and in various stages. So, uh, we're inviting public comment before we bring that to the council. And like I said, that one, we have a community workshop scheduled. We're inviting in, uh, some of the experts on this particular topic to help explain the effect that the reach codes might have on different types of, uh, building going forward. We just referenced one of the other things I wanted to highlight, which was on the March first council agenda, the Commons projects coming back to you with the discussion about um, whether the campus should include, um, additional meeting rooms and city offices. And, um, to keep us on track for the, um, library grant, we really need to make a decision in March. So it's helpful to have it kick off on March first, so that if. We really need to make a decision in March, so it's helpful to have it kick off on March first so that if you're not. You're not ready to make a decision that night, you'll be able to schedule a follow-up conversation during the month of March. And then uh, March fifteen will be bringing back rent regulation and eviction protections with a lot of the information that you've asked us for. At some of the prior meetings. So we're going to be March fifteen, so we're going to be pretty busy uh in the month of March. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Any questions? Yes.
I could you remind us again what the rules are about meetings with uh the COVID emergency ending the end of February? I noticed Sky just smiled. What are we going to do with all that?
Yeah, so since the simple rule is um. You can participate remotely.
Okay.
If you provide in advance before we publish the agenda. Where you're going to be so that we can say on the agenda where you're going to be. And then you have to allow the public into the whatever that space is should they request and you need to publish. Or post the agenda at that location. So um, that's the standard. The more complicated. Options are uh twice a year, you can invoke. Emergency provisions where you couldn't comply with that particular set of rules. Um, and if you think that circumstance might arise for you, we probably should have an offline conversation with. With the city clerk to make sure we follow all the procedures there. But that's a twice a year option under certain circumstances.
One last question in that off-site, do you need to be within your jurisdiction?
The and the answer.
A quorum needs to be.
Under the old teleconference rules that that predate the pandemic or any COVID-related changes to the Brown Act. Um, the rule was and remains um under the option that the city manager just outlined that a quorum has to be within the jurisdiction. But not physically present at the meeting. So um, if you're trapped, if if there are other circumstances and. Uh, more than any and you're not within the jurisdiction, then then it would be worth reaching out to city manager, city clerk about it.
So so just to clarify, if we're if we're doing it at home. It it's okay.
It, yes, uh, subject to the rules that the city manager just described.
No, I I know. Those those rules are actually pretty easy to follow.
They are. And and just to clarify that, that is for council members to participate in the meeting, not for the public. I s- I assume the plan is to continue to make Zoom available for the public.
Actually, I'll use this. So for your meetings, we will continue to offer Zoom. For participation by the public and I would not be surprised if. You're a lot of your presenters, particularly consultants, use it because then we don't have to pay them. Come over here and sit and wait for their item. They could be home on Zoom or at their office on Zoom and then participate. So I think you'll continue to see some presentations. You may occasionally even see a staff person if for whatever reason they. Needed to do it from another location. The planning commission, we are going to operate comparatively to how you're going to operate. Because we know there's a lot of public interest in continuing to engage on a lot of planning permission items. Um, I think they. They go back, they they were zoomed last night. I I think the twenty eighth is their first time coming back in person. The other boards and commissions are kind of um going to use a. A modified setup, probably not as um nicer broadcast, but we'll have something so the public participate. I I managed the library board on Monday. We use a laptop and we just only did sound on Monday, but we're going to get a webcam and. Point it in the right direction. So that's kind of the plan.
Great, thank you. Um, any other questions? Great. Um, so with that, uh, why don't we move on to council member oral reports and comments? Oh, I'm sorry. I I first let me open up to the public if anyone has uh any questions or comments on the uh city managers. Oral report. Um, there's nobody in the chamber. So Alison, do we have anyone?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members on Zoom. And there's no public comment.
Okay, thank you. So let's close that item and then move on to number six, council members oral reports and comments. Who would like to go first?
I will do the um. Route twenty nine, I've talked about it before, but I just wanted to make sure we keep it upfront. So if people have comments, they can complain to. Um, somebody else for a change. Uh, the other thing I attended was the uh. Cam uh Transportation Authority Marin uh Executive. And Legislative Committee Meeting Monday. Uh, I'm not a member of that committee, but I've learned through hard lessons in life, a lot of decisions get made there that. Surprise, surprise, show up at the um. Uh, regular meetings already seemingly decided, so. Um, it it's very interesting is the Tamil Pius. Avenue crossing in Corder Madera, which has been in the papers, but one of the things that. They're recommending is that TAM commit. All of what's called the cycle LPP, which is a cycle five local partnership program. Funds which are authorized um. By the California Transportation Commission. And these are funds that. Are for um, let's see. It's for uh twenty twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven. And they're anticipating they'll get one point million. This is not guaranteed, but they're anticipating that. So they want to commit those funds to this Tamil Pius. Um, drive over crossing. And the reason to do it is that uh there's going to be a shortfall in the funding. And they just want to make sure that. Corning Madera has the best shot at getting thirty eight million dollars in state funding. It's a good project. Uh, they've been working on it for about eight years. I've used that crossing on the air almost every day. Uh, and it would help the current traffic situation, but also. Um, if. Corner Madera's Reno locations are approved, a lot of them are in that area or off of that area. And so it would probably include improved traffic conditions in the future. So my inclination is to do it in favor when it does become. Before the full board, but I wanted to tell you guys because if there are objections to it. You'll have time to get a hold of me and talk to me about it. Uh, if you if you don't feel it's a good idea, I am a little concerned about committing funds that we don't. You know, haven't been announced and aren't in hand. That's just rubs the wrong me the wrong way, but. Um, after hearing some of the quarter Madera council members and from personal experience. It is a good project. It's just that one aspect of it concerned me. So that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Carol. Um, anyone else?
A short one and. Uh, last night I attended the Marin Waters customer workshop in Corder Madera. They're doing four Marin Waters doing four. Uh, customer workshops. This one was in our jurisdiction in Corder Madera um for Central Marin. I think the next one will be in San Rafael and then in Novato. So if you're interested in finding out um what these workshops are about, you can go on Marin Waters website. Essentially, it was a a very long presentation regarding infrastructure demands and inadequacies. And similar to what we will be hearing tonight about our storm drains, there's a lot of infrastructure needs. In our, in the water department, um and there will be rate there shopping around what the rate increases will be to compensate for that. Um, it was a very lengthy presentation. I think it's on their website. I gave. The actual physical one I picked up to Julian um to see, but it's um. There was a lot of robust conversation from the audience um about. Why uh everybody's been conserving water so well in the last several years, but rates are still going up. So. I would encourage if anyone in our community is interested in reading and hearing about that, to go on the Marin Water website and go to the next workshop. And then I'll um leave the report about Central Marin Fire and Central Marin Police to Councilmember Harf since he's now the chair.
Councilmember Harf. Let's let's see your test master skills.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Hoff and myself are the representatives to of Larkspur to the Central Marin Fire and Central Marin Police uh authorities. Which meets quarterly and we met last Thursday um and uh. Jump in and tell me what we did. Essentially, we did get the audit uh report, which was um what we had heard at our council meeting before. Um, and uh, we did. Uh, now blanking on what we did at the fire one. You want to jump in on that one? Uh, we did hear from fire, the fire chief um.
I I have instructed the fire chief that he is limited to one PowerPoint presentation per meeting going forward because. He had several fantastic PowerPoint presentations, but uh. It made the meeting pretty long.
Yeah.
Uh, mostly you heard about the staffing updates.
Right.
And then.
Thank you.
The other thing that occurred. We're in the process of purchasing a fire truck and. Had some problems with the financing deal, so the chief spent a little time explaining what had happened. Um, but we're police report, we're back on track. I signed all the paperwork actually this morning, so or yesterday, so fire truck. Will be ordered shortly.
And in both contexts for the Central Marin Fire and Central Marin Police, staffing and recruitment is a challenge for both. And we needed to discuss opportunities there are to create a more um inviting. Uh, department uh benefits for potential recruits. And one of the discussions within Central One Fire was to um to look at the opportunities to help fund education like the paramedic. Uh, school um as a real incentive to have um attend, have. Individuals apply for our many roles that are still available in fire and police and. Um, I think this is a national, national, nationwide problem, but we're definitely seeing a greater trend towards finding. Um, able-bodied and competent recruits. So that was continues to be an issue for us. I think that was about the the majority of it. Oh, last thing about that, I'm sorry, the um, the Chief Martin sent out the pinning ceremony. Um, invitation, which is this Saturday and you brought it up at. The city manager brought up at our last meeting, but it is at ten thirty and it's open to the public at a station fourteen. In which there will be a pinning ceremony for promotions and uh he reiterated that with an invitation that went around to the councils. Um, just two days ago.
We had two very high-ranking uh retirements and as a result, that sort of trickle down through the organization. There's quite a few. Uh, members of the authority who are being promoted. So it should be a nice ceremony.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
I'll just make one last comment about that. Um. You've seen in the newspaper and the Marin IJ and we've discussed it at our last meeting in just very little detail um. About the uh local motion solutions, a study of the Ross Valley Fire Department. And um, that has been presented to three councils within the Ross Valley and that document is available online and. Um, yeah, I think it was presented to the Ross City Council last week and so it's under the Ross Agenda items also. Um, I'd be happy to send this around to our council that the police, the fire chief did send around to the council, to the fire council. So. I don't have any comment about it since I haven't read it yet.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Way. Um, Councilmember Harf.
Uh, well, thanks to Councilmember Way for carrying the water on that last report. I appreciate that. Because as I said, I had not prepared to say anything more uh substantial. Um, on that, although I do think I got I got elected to be Chair of the Police Council. Is that correct? So I'll have to be better informed the next time. Um, just two things, uh, one, just very quickly, it's not really reported anything that's that's happened, but we do have. Um, a uh, a full board meeting tomorrow of MCE Clean Energy. Um, which we haven't had for a period of time. We have had committee meetings, including executive committee meetings. Uh, where we have um. Uh, raised some, some uh, I would, I would call them governance issues in terms of. Uh, how some of the committees function, some of the election processes, the documents that. Are kind of the formational documents for that that entity. Um, and will be uh. Moving forward with uh basically an ad hoc committee of executive committee to take up some of those. Um, institutional issues, which I I look forward to doing. There was some confusion uh when we had an election in December. About the rules that applied to the election of of officers and as a result, we're actually going to have to do. Another election for the vice chair position of the board. Because it wasn't conducted quite right and that's what really has prompted some of these institutional um institutional issues. So I'm looking forward to attending that meeting tomorrow night. Um, uh, secondly, more on a on a personal note, I was very pleased to go to. Uh, meeting the other night of a group of folks, elected folks. From around Marin who participated in a at a a months-long kind of training program. Put on by an organization called SURGE. Uh, I can't remember exactly what SURGE stands for, but it's stand up. Against racism, I think. Um, but I don't remember what uh the G is. In any event, uh, uh, our local supervisor was in attendance at that meeting, Katie Rice. Uh, our new supervisor um from the northern part of the county, Eric Lukin, was also a participant. Um, this was a meeting that we had essentially to kind of catch up and. See if we have been able to carry forward with some of the things that we all learned during the training sessions that we all participated in earlier. Um, uh, and it it's a great program. Um, it's very kind of eye-opening. It kind of forces you to think about. Your own attitudes towards um racial issues within the framework of being in, you know, on 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 a city council. Or on the board supervisors. Um, and I think a lot of us who did participate in those trainings were very grateful for the. Uh, the thinking that it that it that it prompted. So I bring it up not only to kind of. Say thanks publicly to SURGE for doing the program and having that recap and the people who are participating in it. Um, but also to invite um other members of this council um. To talk to me separately, or I can put you in touch with the SURGE folks. I think they'd like to do additional training sessions in the future. I would encourage um your consideration of that. Uh, because I think it's very uh very worthwhile and informs. A lot of things that we uh do and can do um in our community. By virtue of the role that we played by sitting up here on this dais. So I can give you contact information. Um, and um, I'm going to try to follow up with them personally because of a. Role that I play on the Marin County Bar Association as the Chair of that uh organization's diversity committee. And see if we can uh get SURGE involved with that as well. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Candell.
Sure, just quickly, uh, met with members of the Heritage Board, Heritage Foundation. Um, they expressed uh interest in giving their thoughts on city hall. Uh, and the future of this building. I invited them to join us at the next meeting and we're going to be discussing. Uh, we had our subcommittee meeting um with the uh. The tenants association from Skylark uh and um. Their position was uh really that uh the tenants in Skylark are not interested in subsidies. Uh, or working something out with uh the uh management or the ownership. Um, so I don't know where that subcommittee is going to lead to, but we'll. Um, hold that into our next uh group conversation about uh rent control. And that's so I got today. Thanks.
Great. Um, quick question, Scott. How many people attended the tenant associations at Skylark?
Uh, you know, I I believe there were probably four or five people from the tenants association, but they. Made it clear that they felt that they represented uh the viewpoint of. The majority of the tenants at Skylark and that they were speaking for the tenants at Skylark. Uh, if anyone, you know, that's a tenant at Skylark that disagrees with that, you're encouraged to let us know, but. Uh, unless we hear otherwise, we will just assume that they are speaking for the tenants of Skylark and that their position was was pretty clear. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Yeah.
Um, at the strategic planning workshop, uh, Councilmember Way, you mentioned you were going to be at a meeting at the police authority. Over twenty one fifty South Alicia. I was wondering if anything came out of that.
Oh, the um Project Home Key um CAG meeting is tomorrow is the additional one. The one that we had. The one that we had last month where they had four law enforcement officers represented. Oh, did I report on that?
You did.
Oh, I didn't. Oh.
I remember from last meeting.
Yeah, we'll hold on to it because it'll be elaborated on tomorrow. So I'll be, have more details on it. Um, that was just a subcommittee meeting and the full presentation is supposed to be tomorrow at four o'clock to the entire the, the entire committee, not just the small subcommittee. Would you mind if I held off on?
Oh, no, 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 that's fine. Just a personal comment and, and having dealt with this issue for twenty-five some years. I have found the police know these individuals better than sometimes their own workers because the workers come and go unfortunately on too regular a basis. And in dealing with this issue, I have found the police officers provide, they know the clients much better than, than some of the staff people that are involved in these programs. And that's just
That came across, across very clearly from the pre, there were uh, Chief Norton was there. Um, Lynn, and I don't remember her last name, who works with the unhoused um, individuals in San Rafael. Um, Mike Thompson, who is the sheriff's deputy who is in charge of with working with unhoused individuals. And um, the gentleman, uh, the law enforcement officer from um, Marin Parks. I can't remember his name, Mike. Um, all of them on, did um, report similarly that they're very intensively engaged with community members who will be in um, the pipeline and in the process to be housed at South Aliso. And they know them personally. They get involved with their um, daily lives and uh, they felt very confident that they would be able to do that at South Aliso's property. So but tomorrow, there's a, the, the monthly meeting, so I'll have more details after that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, I'll just uh, report quickly. Um, so I've been holding office hours here, uh, two thirty on Tuesdays. I've had maybe ten to twelve people come in the last two sessions. It's been wonderful. So I just want to encourage anyone who wants to come. It's, it's a, you know, really for me, a listening session and I, I'm hearing so many different of our, you know, uh, community concerns. So I'm, I'm grateful to the people who've come and encourage more people to come. Um, and then just a quick plug for SMART. I um, attended the uh, board meeting this afternoon and um, Councilmember Carol uh, joined and gave some good public comment. By the way, thank you for posting your public comment. I really do appreciate the thought and the written comments ahead it, and I might do that. Uh, so anyway, they reported that their, their ridership has been, been going up and recovering, I think two thousand two hundred thirty-eight people uh, per week. And I'm proud to say that I represent four of those rides. That would be myself and my five-year-old uh, going up to uh, the Charlie Brown Museum and back. And, and really my point in this is I, I'm hoping that uh, you know, as a counselor, as a community, we find ways to um, you know, see how that service can benefit the community. I, I think everything was on time. It's very clean. The costs were much cheaper than I thought. Um, and you know, I, I'm not here to promote SMART, but I'm here to see what will benefit Larkspur. And, and there are issues and Councilmember Carol brought them up to the connection to the ferry is one I'm thinking about a lot myself. So um, more to come, but uh, and then finally, I just, I, I love that we, I, I know we've taken more time. I figured it's a short meeting, but um, I, I so value, you know, all of us are on separate committees and it's too much to cover. So some of your succinct um, actionable uh, summaries are, are most appreciated. So please continue those. Um, so with that, let's move on to uh, item number seven, which is public hearings and we have none. So we'll move to business items. Eight point one is the twenty twenty-three update to the two thousand nineteen storm drain master plan and uh, love to hear us uh, staff reports.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Uh, Julian Skinner, I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Larkspur. Um, and so tonight we have um, an update of our storm drain master plan that you recall we completed in uh, twenty nineteen. And as part of that process, we identified some follow-up uh, work that would be needed to be done to expand upon the report. Um, and so over the last uh, few years, we've been uh, collecting that information, doing the analysis. And tonight we are presenting to you um, a twenty twenty-three update uh, on the Storm Drain Master Plan. Um, this is actually uh, an action item. So there is a resolution for you to uh, adopt at the end of this to formally adopt this as an update uh, to the plan. Uh, so today I'll briefly go over the twenty nineteen uh, plan and what was included. And give a little update on some of the projects that were identified uh, in there. And then we'll talk about what we've been doing for the bulk of the last year, which is the pipe um, assessment, the condition assessment of our storm drain pipes. Um, as well as an assessment, a more detailed assessment of our uh, storm drain pump stations. Um, and then talk about some of the projects uh, that we propose to assess the needs from those assessments. Um, and then also talk a little bit about uh, funding opportunities for storm drains. Uh, so as you recall, the twenty nineteen storm drain master plan primarily looked um, at alleviating the risk of flooding through um, fixing capacity issues in the storm drains. So this is uh, a model was developed and they uh, processed a number of storms through the model. And that's able to identify areas of the city that are prone to flooding because there's either insufficient storm drains. Um, or the storm drains are under, undersized. And then that together with our staff's uh, history of areas that uh, flood um, led to a, an identification of improvement projects to address those needs. Um, the storm drain master plan twenty nineteen did specifically talk about how the condition of the pipes needed to be further assessed. There wasn't uh, wasn't included in the scope of that twenty nineteen report. Um, and so that's kind of the follow-up work that we're gonna present tonight. Here's just a, a recap. The areas in yellow were where they found that there were some capacity issues that should be um, addressed. And then uh, that report did include a table and uh, varying degrees of priority for projects that we should consider to address the capacity issues. That's what's on the left in the color. Um, and so on the right here, I've provided an update uh, now in twenty twenty-three of uh, looking back at those projects in uh, that were in the twenty nineteen uh, plan and, and where we have uh, finished some projects and uh, moved some projects along. Uh, the biggest uh, project here that was completed um, was the Bon Air Pump Station that at the time of twenty nineteen was not constructed. So uh, it was identified as a need. Um, so that's shown as a completed project. Um, and then we've taken all the other pump stations off of this list because now we've looked at them in more detail in the update. And so those projects are actually getting moved over to the update portion of the plan and being stripped out of the of twenty nineteen. Um, and then we did a little bit of work on there. There's a Magnolia Storm Drain Project here. Uh, we did uh, phase one of that project uh, this year. So you'll see the total has gone down from um, from the needs that were in that report. Uh, the bulk of that uh, was from the Bon Air Pump Station that was completed. Uh, but again, uh, all of those storm drain uh, pump station costs that were in this initial total have now been moved over to the update that you're um, about to see. Um, and so what we've looked at in this update um, is looking at the potential for pipe failures. Um, and joint failures. So primarily you have two different types of pipes under the ground that carry the water. You have um, R C P, which is reinforced concrete pipe. Um, and the typical type of failure you'll see in concrete pipe is the joints will come apart. Um, and then C N P, which is corrugated metal pipe. On the primary failure mechanism you'll see with corrugated metal pipe as the photo shows here is the pipes corrode over time and actually disappear. Um, so this, I think I've shown this photo a few times before, but this was an actual piece of storm drain that was functioning in the city and we had issues with it. We pulled it out and there was only half of it left. Um, so basically the, you know, the earth cavity that's left where this pipe was, was functioning as a, as a dirt uh, storm drain. Um, so we undertook a, a program to video inspect. So we send cameras down into the manholes that can look each way. And then we actually worked with the Ross Valley Sanitary District who have more robust cameras that are able to crawl through the pipes uh, and take videos. And so where we identified we may have an issue, we uh, worked with um, Ross Valley, we had a cooperative agreement uh, where they videoed some of our uh, pipes for us. Um, so here's just some of the snapshots. Um, so this is a corrugated metal pipe. This is kind of in the early phases of failure. You can definitely see there's a discoloration in the sidewalls here. That's corrosion um, in the pipe. And so this is kind of a, a pipe that we would flag. It needs to be repaired or replaced at some, at some point. Uh, not immediately. Uh, but you get to the next, this is kind of the next progression. So this is a pipe that's corroded a little bit further and you can kind of see the sidewalls um, starting to break away uh, here. And then here's uh, one of the scarier ones. So this is actually a section of pipe where it starts out as concrete pipe. And then at a certain point, they switched over and used corrugated metal pipe. And so in the foreground of the photo where the kind of the date stamp is, that's concrete pipe that's still there. As soon as it transitions to corrugated pipe, um, the bottom of the pipe is gone. So uh, our camera went down this and then got to this point and then we pulled it back. Otherwise, that camera may still be going somewhere down that sinkhole. But um, that's, that's a, a, an example of something that needs to be fixed now. Um, and primarily what the concern is with these storm drains that have holes in them is they can lead to sinkholes. I think there's been you know, with the recent storms, there've been some uh, Bay Area sinkholes in the news. And so most of these start with a storm drain or a culvert. Um, and instead of the water continuing down the pipe, it gets out of the pipe and it starts washing the earth away. And at some point, your road can uh, lose that foundation. Um, and your road can actually fail and then you end up with a sinkhole. Um, and if you get one of those sinkholes and it's still raining, then they just get worse and worse as the water is uh, pouring through and takes everything with it. Um, this is a concrete pipe. So the failures here are um, not as dramatic as you get uh, with the corrugated metal pipe. Here's a pipe where the joints are, are leaking. Uh, not always the end of the world. In fact, some storm drains are designed to take groundwater into, to de-water. But the issue is if they weren't designed with that purpose, um, then there's also the potential that they could take dirt in as well as the water. And eventually it can migrate and that dirt pocket can become bigger and you can get a sinkhole from a a corrugated metal pipe too. So here's an example. Um, I had a video of this, but unfortunately I couldn't. It was an Apple Windows thing. I couldn't get it to play. So I took a couple of, of stills. Uh, the one on the left is the camera going through the pipe and uh, what you can see in the foreground is the reinforcing steel, which you should never be able to see. If you can see reinforcing steel in concrete, then something is wrong and somebody needs to look at that um, concrete. So in this case, uh, there's been a pipe failure. This is at a joint where likely two ends of the pipe that were joined together, uh, there was some movement and one pipe broke the other. And so you see a chunk of concrete. Uh, and then you see the reinforcing steel kind of curled uh, up there. And the next photo is, as the camera moved a little bit further down the line and it swiveled to look up. You can actually see daylight from above, from on the street, from inside this storm drain. So um, that's definitely a, you know, a cavity in the backfill of the road that goes all the way up to the surface, all the way down to the pipe. So this is uh, reinforced concrete pipe. And another example of um, something that needs to be addressed uh, now these um, where you have these holes and where there's the water that can escape uh, from the pipe. Every time it gets out, it's gonna take more and more dirt with it. And these sinkholes typically don't get smaller. Um, as I mentioned, um, these are some um, examples uh, close by. Uh, there was a big one uh, that was definitely in the news in twenty sixteen in Maraga. That's the one on the left. So again, a storm drain failed. Um, and so as you can see here, it's not just your street that you lose. There's other utilities in the street too. And so you know, there's the potential to impact your water, um, your gas and your sewer services. If uh, your sinkhole is, is big enough that it takes out big uh, big chunks. Sorry, the Maraga one is on the right. The one on the left is uh, the entrance to the Oakland Zoo uh, that happened in this January that I think they're still uh, fixing, but a similar thing, a, a culvert that came apart and um, eventually it washed the, the street out. So those are the kind of things that we're trying to uh, prevent uh, from happening. And so um, late last year, we came to you as we were kind of midway through doing this analysis. And we said, we've got a number of storm drains that we've already identified or an issue. We need to get to them and start designing a fix for them sooner rather than later. So before we finish this update, we'd already come to you with a list of these eight locations. And we said, we need to start planning to fix these. So these have already been funded with American Rescue Plan Act. You did that late last year. So it's about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of projects there. And so uh, the next two groups are from our conclusion of our the rest of our uh, video analysis. And so I've split them into priority one and priority two. Priority one is there's already a hole in the pipe. There's already a mechanism there to start a sinkhole. So these really need to be start uh, to get, to get planned uh, and to get fixed over the next uh, year or two, depending on the uh, severity and, and the location of these. And so uh, there's a number of locations here. There's about um, just under a mile worth of storm drain pipe in all of these locations. And the cost is about two point two million uh, for these repairs. Uh, and these costs I'm presenting to you are all in cost. So this includes the engineering, uh, the design, contingencies and, and everything. It's not just the construction cost. Uh, priority two is pipes that we can see are starting to deteriorate, but we think we've can probably get another five years or so um, out of them. And so this list is um, also just under a mile long. And again, this is about a two point three million dollar uh, need of uh, pipe repairs, pipe replacements, pipelining. Uh, what we've used to generate uh, these budget numbers here is assuming that we're gonna line most of these pipes. Um, and so this is basically you're building a new pipe inside of the existing pipe. So you don't have to dig it up, which is um, good. Uh, after we've just paved all of our streets, we don't really want to be digging our streets up. So the pipelining is a good um, option to having to uh, dig those up. So that's a summary of um, what we think we need to do with our pipes for the next five years. Uh, just over five million dollars and that's about ten percent of our entire uh, storm drain network system. Um, it's probably feasible when we get to the end of year five and we re-video all these again, that you're gonna have another need in the millions. Uh, most of our storm drains are pretty old and they're not gonna get any better. So um, even though we've only identified a two-mile need at the moment, my, my expectation is when we come back in, in five years and look at this list again, you're gonna have some of those uh, pipes that um, were, were not flagged for a five-year need. Uh, but just outside of that, that are gonna start creeping into the need-to-do-soon list. Um, and to move on to the pump stations, um, I can stop and answer any questions about pipes, uh, the pipe system if you want before I move into the pump stations.
Okay, I'm the new guy. Um, so I'm just curious of what's the length of the service life of corrugated versus concrete and
It's really a um, a function of, uh, well, there's two different functions. So corrugated metal pipe is, its primary uh, lifespan is determined by the kind of soil it's in because it's metal and it depends on how it reacts with the soil. Um, typically, it's about a twenty-five-year life would be the expectation for a corrugated pipe. You could stretch it maybe to fifty in ideal uh, soil conditions. And we have lots of pipes that are older than fifty years. Uh, corrugated pipe isn't, corrugated metal pipe isn't typically used today for most new storm drain projects unless it's a roadside driveway culvert. And it's a, it's a cheaper option. It's a lightweight product. And so for lightweight installations because of um, because of its less expensive cost, you'll see it. But there's not many cities or public agencies that install corrugated metal as a primary storm drain now. Um, the concrete pipe is uh, about fifty years and you can probably get a hundred out of it in ideal conditions. Um, and the primary factor in how long concrete pipe will last is how well it was installed and how well it was backfilled and everything was built around it. Because your concrete pipe usually breaks because the joints move and the, and they break apart as opposed to the corrugated metal pipe that will deteriorate or corrode over time. So the concrete pipe is, is probably about double what corrugated metal is. Um, there's a lot of plastic pipe that's used today. Not very much of our system is, is plastic, but most modern installations these days are either plastic. Concrete's still used quite a bit just because of its strength. Uh, but a lot of what's installed today is either plastic or concrete with about a fifty-year uh, lifespan.
Which will you be using?
Well, what we propose for most of these, if they're lining, it's a, it's a plastic liner uh, that's inflated um, inside of the old pipe and it creates a new plastic pipe inside of the old pipe. If it's a remove and replace, it'll depend on the location. Uh, but typically uh, plastic is more economical than store, than uh, concrete. If the pipe is really shallow or there's some other strength concern issues, then we'll, would move to a, a concrete because it's a little bit stronger.
Okay, my other last question is sort of disaster related. And that is I recall from the Santa Rosa, particularly the fires, there were a lot of problems with plastic pipe uh, melting. And essentially the entire system had to be ripped, ripped out and replaced. And I'm just curious uh, as big, as much as I fear a fire in some of our areas here, but I'm also curious what is a better method for earthquake safety? Because as I recall, there's been instances in particularly San Francisco and Santa Cruz after the uh, Loma Prieta about some of the newer ones. About some of the newer ones. Uh, handled it better than the old, uh, corrugated.
Yeah, I mean, as far as earthquakes go, it, it's ground movement and, um, your, whether it's, uh, corrugated metal or, or concrete, they're both going to react. Probably similarly, although again with the concrete, you've got the issue of when the joints move together. That's when you get your failures. Uh, plastics, a little bit more flexible, so it'll take some of the, uh, joint, uh, the ground movement a little bit more. Uh, you can actually bend, uh, the plastic pipe too, when you install it. Um, so it, it's, it's more earthquake friendly, but as you mentioned, um, a lot of the plastic storm drains that were. Installed over the years are highly, uh, flammable. And so, uh, yes, Santa Rosa did lose a lot of their, uh, storm drains, uh, in the fires.
Okay, thank you. I have questions about pump stations, but hold this.
Thanks. Um. I, I always enjoy your presentations on store grains because you have the best graphics. And they're, they're, uh, they're, they're, they're compelling, um. And I'd say they were entertaining, except that they're not. Uh, but thank you for this presentation. Um, I guess the question I had, um. Is a question I've asked when we've had these presentations before, which is, are there any issues? Um, raised by. Um, our storm drain infrastructure. Uh, uh, being multi-jurisdictional, particularly if we've got storm drains that. Over in Greenbree, I see one of our projects is on La Cuesta and I note that's actually, there's a typo on the spelling of La Cuesta. Um, uh, but you know, we, we have our juris, our jurisdiction, Larkspur's jurisdiction is up the hill on La Cuesta. And then when we go down closer to where I live and get further down the hill, then it becomes Marin County. And I'm just curious to know if. Uh, if there have been any issues or concerns raised by the fact that we do have. That infrastructure that crosses jurisdictional bound, boundaries.
Um, I wouldn't say there's issues or concerns. I mean, for the most part, your storm drains are going to follow the way. Um, that the land lays, so it, they're going to be installed from high and they're going to. End up in a, in a creek or receiving watershed and that's not necessarily going to follow jurisdictional. Boundaries. So there are definitely sections up in the Greenberry Hills that go from city to county, back to city again and. Uh, in some cases go through private property and then become public again. Um, and typically it's wherever that infrastructure resides, that's who's responsible for it. And so. Uh, the trick is in when we did our twenty nineteen storm drain master plan, we had to go get some information from. Uh, the county to understand how their system worked because it connected to our system and we were modeling it. And so. Um, you know, it makes it a little bit more complex because you don't, um, have ownership of everything that's coming through your pipes. And so you want to understand what that. Um, what that is, but as far as maintenance needs, uh, for the most part, um, where you're, um. If a Larkspur parcel is below a county parcel and the county water comes into Larkspur, then there's. California drainage law that talks about, uh, water has to go downhill. Uh, on what you can and can't do between upstream and downstream properties. Uh, but basically the, the infrastructure that is within the city is a city responsibility. Regardless of, of where that water is coming from and vice versa. If we, if we're sending water to the, to the county and they're downstream of us, then that's their infrastructure to manage.
Yep, Councilman Way and then.
So this is sort of a piggyback to, um, Councilmember Haroff's question, uh. When, when, uh, Sa, the Ross Valley sanitary district did their lateral line replacement requirement to. To have homeowners replace lateral lines to, that go into the trunk line of the sanitary. Do we also have. A situation where homeowners have drainage, stormwater drains that drain off their private property into our. Main system and what are the connections with those?
So not to a great degree. Now, if we were on the east coast or somewhere where the houses typically had basements. Then you will quite often see, uh, footing drains tied into the storm drain. Um, and every house will have a water sewer and a storm drain lateral. Uh, but where, uh, you typically don't have basements, then there's typically not a storm drain line that goes from the main in the street out to the property. Um, other than, um, you know, during some subdivisions were developed with, uh, yard drains in the yard and those were piped. Um, directly into the storm drain. Um, it's not really the practice anymore. Um, a lot of, uh, we went through a phase where the yard drains then were poked through the curb. And you'll see little pipes sticking out of the curb. And the thought was let's, uh, not put everything right in the, uh, storm drain right away. So. Um, there are definitely some private laterals, um, that connect into the storm drain, but it's not nearly to the extent like every house will have a sewer lateral. Water lateral. It's not necessarily, um, the case with the storm drains. It kind of def, depends on how that subdivision was developed and what the developer did and how. They handled the private drainage when they set it up.
Do we have those? Like, um, do we have any of those subdivisions that we know of that have done that?
There are definitely some areas up in the Greenberry Hills where when we video the pipes, we can see four inch pipes.
Okay. And same with like the, some of the neighborhoods have sump pumps that pump out, uh, into the, into the curb. That would go into our main storm drain system, even though it'd be pumping out from a private residence.
So we don't look at what happens inside the building. Uh, technically anything that occurs within the footprint of a building is supposed to go to a domestic sanitary sewer. So that would not be something that we permit.
Okay.
Um, but.
I never saw those just.
He, he's not saying we've occasioned code enforcement with this problem. So.
Yeah, there's.
We're not asking you to tattle on anybody, but, uh, from time to time we do get called in because people realize. A particular storm drains being, uh, receiving far more water than it ought to, it was ever designed to receive.
Okay.
And it's often exactly what you're describing has been set up.
Yeah. If it's in their yard, it's fine. But if it comes from within the building footprint, technically it's supposed to go to the.
To the curb and down to the, into the drainage. Okay.
And then also a lot of what you'll see with the current clean stormwater regulations is they will promote. Having drainage from a private parcel go across a lawn or through a ditch and then gravity flow. Into an inlet or a catch basin into the storm sewer so that that water has a chance to get cleaned. Before it gets, uh, into the storm drain. So hard piping private into a storm drain doesn't happen that much anymore because there's. An opportunity to clean that, uh, drainage water before it gets into the pipe and into the, into the creek.
I ju, I just had one more question. When we've done the, um. The road, uh, repaving and maintenance plan, many, many of the concerns that we originally had where people always wanted theirs done first, their street that was most. Important to them understandably. When I look at your list, it seems like we're pretty comprehensive all around entirely throughout our jurisdiction. It looks like we're kind of touching almost every neighborhood in this first go around.
Yeah, there's a little bit everywhere. There's.
Seems like it.
There's up in the hills on both sides of, of the creek. There's some, uh, down in some of the flatter lands on Magnolia, Larkspur plat, there's a little bit. A little bit everywhere.
It looks like it's in the marina. It looks like it's over on this side of town. And I mean, I just, I think that's important that the community knows that this is all over. It's not just in a particular neighborhood and the priority setting seems to be pretty comprehensive. So that was more of a comment than a question.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Canell.
Thanks, just real quick. Uh, do we work with any other jurisdiction? I mean, if, if, uh, Larkspur, uh, water, you know, connects to the county. Do we work with the county to try to coordinate any of this stuff? Or is it really every man for themselves and trying to figure this out?
Yeah, as far as storm drain goes, um, if, and so we're going to be looking at, um, these issues that we have. And if we. Uh, see an issue that we think could be better served by a different pipe alignment or a different connection or something like that. And it. Involved, uh, county jurisdiction pipe instead of ours, then we would have that conversation. In fact, a couple of. Years ago, we were looking at a, a pipe we had an issue with up in the Greenberry Hills and we ran through a number of alternatives for rerouting the pipe. In a different manner from how it was because it was causing an issue. And one of those alternatives was to connect it to, to county. Uh, piping. So, um, did end up that that's what we did, but, um, yeah, it's. Um, if, if we're, if we're, like I said, when we did the analysis in twenty nineteen, we had to get a lot of information from the county to understand. Uh, their system, but, uh, you know, if we were to want to do something that impacted their storm drain pipe. Then we would have to basically get their permission because we would be altering what's going through their system. And vice versa.
Thank you. Um, Julian, I just one quick one, uh, kind of, um, following up on what, uh, Councilmember Way was talking about coverage. So I believe you've inspected eleven miles. And if I recall, we have nineteen miles of storm drain. So in those. Remaining eight, is it possible we missed any high priority items or, you know, dangerous? You know, ones with high corrosion?
Um, I would say, yeah, so we didn't, uh, video inspect every inch of pipe. What we did was we went to a neighborhood and we inspected a select. Uh, number of the pipes. If we're in a neighborhood and the first three pipes we looked at were bad, then we did every pipe in that neighborhood. We went to a neighborhood and we went through some pipes and they looked A-OK and we knew the whole subdivision was built at one time, then those are the pipes that we. Skipped. Um, one of the recommendations you'll see at the end of this is we need to be more proactive with. Video inspecting and cleaning out our storm drain lines. And that will help reduce the. Um, the chances that one of those lines that we presume is good because everything else around it was good. And we know it's only twenty years old is, is still good. We still should get a camera in those pipes once every five years. So. Um, yeah, there's always a chance that there's another pipe out there that has some anomaly that we, you know, haven't got to yet, but. Uh, part of what we're going to propose moving forward is that we do this video inspection on a more frequent basis and that we actually get through. Each one of those miles of, of pipes in a, in a cycle.
And that, that sort of is my follow-up question because you know, with the heavy rains we got, it, it seems like we have a window of opportunity, you know, where the. Mud and everything's been cleared, which is something we couldn't do twelve months ago. So I'm just curious if, if we have a, a. Rough idea of when the remaining eight, you know, would be videoed. I mean, I understand the, the logic that, you know, you can, you know, sort of deduce that there's not a problem, but. I, I, I would love to know if, if the other eight could be inspected, you know, at a, at a reasonable cost with the clearance that we have now.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a number of factors that, uh, affect our ability to, to inspect these, um, uh, pipes. Um, one of them is you mentioned, we had all these storms that flushed out a lot of the, the mud from the pipes. Uh, but there are still some pipes there, some of the bigger pipes that, um, have such deposits in them that these storms are not flushing them out. Uh, we also have pipes that have a lot of gravel in them that just doesn't flush out. Um, and unfortunately these pipes, we can't easily get a camera through, um, because it's on wheels. And if it gets stuck on stuff, it can only get so far. Um, and then even if we can get a camera through, you can't see the bottom of the pipe because it's under the, the mud. Um, and the gravel. Um, one of the big challenges we've had is, um, it's very. Expensive to take that material out of the pipe and then dispose of it. Even though it came from a storm drain, you cannot put it, you can't clean it and flush it back through the storm drain. It can't, you. It basically has to go to a landfill and it gets weighed and it's, it's expensive to get it out of, out of the pipe. And so that's. Um, one of the things that led us to the, you know, the, the number of miles that we've done and which pipes we did and which pipes we didn't. Um, the other is, is you know, we went through a water shortage and we couldn't, uh, you have to flush the pipe out first and we couldn't use water for a while. So. Um, you know, ideally I would like to get through the rest of the pipes in the next two years. Um, but the, the cost is highly variable depending on what's in those, in those pipes. And. I mean, running a camera through is a fixed cost per lineal foot, but if somebody has to spend a week, uh, pulling material, um, out of that pipe. So that we can run a camera through, that's when it starts to get really expensive. So.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. So why don't we move on?
All right. So we'll move on to pump stations. And so we have six, uh, pump stations in town. And so basically a pump station is typically at a, a low area of the city. And what it does is it takes the storm drains, all of those pipes that I showed you. Before are nineteen miles of pipe. Basically they take the, the drainage. Uh, and the water flows through them by gravity and goes from the high areas to the, to the creek. Uh, by gravity, but there are some areas of town where you want to get the water out faster. Or you're in a low area and you actually have to pump the, the water out to the creek. And that's what our pump stations are for. Um, and so of our pump stations, uh, we have one brand new one. That's the Bon Air Road Pump Station over by Hillview. Uh, but then our other pump stations are, um, old and in need of upgrade. And they were looked at preliminarily in the twenty nineteen study. Uh, and they suggested that there's definitely some upgrades that are needed here. And they put a dollar figure to them and they said, but. Really, these are so old, you should be planning now to replace these pump stations. Um, and if you talk to our maintenance superintendent, Bob Quinn, his. Consistent headache with all of these storms is a pump station going down. We lose a, we lose a pump. Um, or something fails at one of the pump stations. I think he, at the last storms we had, he was at each one of these pump stations troubleshooting. Something that, that wasn't working properly. So you can have all the clean pipes and all the sized pipes you want. Uh, but if they go to a pump station and the pump station stops working, then your water just sits and then it starts to, to build up in the street. So these are a very important part. Um, of our system. And so, um, our consultant has recommended they should all be rebuilt. And they've all got price tags that are somewhere between one and two million dollars, depending on where they are and, uh, what components they have in them. Um, and so in looking at these, we've tried to prioritize these fixes. Um, the first one we would look to fix is in Heatherwood and part of what's driving this as being the first choice is Ross Valley has a pump station. That's actually in the same building as our storm drain pump station. Um, and they have plans to redo their pump station. So if we did a joint project with them, there would be some cost savings and it would. Uh, allow us to better, uh, determine how those two pump stations should be set up. Right now they're in the same building, which is not great because if. One of them fails and overflows, one of them will overflow into the other, which is, um, a nightmare. So. Uh, we're going to look at separating those two pump stations and creating two new pump stations. Uh, for Heatherwood, Ross Valley would pay for their sewer pump station and the city would pay for the storm drain. But we would do a joint project with them. And so we have that opportunity because Ross Valley is looking at moving forward. So. Uh, we're looking at prioritizing that as, uh, as our first, uh, pump station upgrade. And then. We would go ahead and do about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements at the other pump stations to tide them over until when we can do their rehab. Um, because there's some big, uh, tags on these pump stations and I've got them programmed here for year three. Five and then six to ten, but when we get to the funding, uh, the funding doesn't match this program. So. We're going to have to talk about, uh, funding in future meetings, um, if we're going to, uh, follow through and be able to do some of these, um, improvements. Um, so that's priority one is we would do the Heatherwood pump station and then we would do the minor upgrades at the other ones. Uh, priority two is Redwood Pump Station primarily because it's our biggest. And it's also interconnected with the Heatherwood Pump Station and the marsh behind Redwood High School. And it's also one of our biggest. Um, triggers during a storm events. We have pump issues there. Um, so this would be our second priority. Uh, Larkspur Plaza Drive would be the third. It's actually our smallest pump station, but it's also one that we have the most issues with. Um, and then Boardwalk and Industrial, uh, would be our fourth priority improvements. And so we've shown these cast out over the next. Um, ten years, uh, the total for all of those pump station improvements is about nine point four, uh, million.
Julian, where's the Redwood Pump Station located?
The Redwood Pump Station is at the corner of Lucky and Doherty. So right at the entrance to Redwood High School. Much bigger pump station there. And then there's a small one and that's ours.
Okay.
Closer to the, to the driveway. Um, so what I've done on the next slide is I've kind of looked at the next five years and kind of projected, uh, what our needs would be for both the pipes. Um, and the pump station and combine them together. Um, and showing a projected spend of about eleven million dollars over the next, uh, five years. Um, if you look at everything we've got in here with the pipes we've identified and the pump stations, that total is about twenty-two and a half million. So. We're showing here doing, um, eleven million of that over the next five years. Talking about potential funding sources, uh, we've still got some ARPA money left over. Uh, you did allocate the seven hundred and forty thousand of that to that priority zero projects that we showed you, the, um, pipes that we identified in the middle. Of the report. So we've still got, uh, a million dollars of ARPA, uh, ready that would be eligible for storm drain improvements. Uh, we also have both gas tax and the TAM measure A that we've been using for pavement maintenance are eligible for, uh, storm drain. Maintenance. So as we move forward, uh, with looking at storm drain improvements and we're looking at what we need to do to keep our streets in certain conditions. Uh, we'll be looking to see if we have any excess of gas tax or measure, um, AA beyond what we need for paving, uh, that would be eligible. Um, for storm drains. Um, likewise, the citywide pa, the citywide paving plan fund is probably going to end with about two million dollars in balance. Um, after we complete all of our planned paving projects. Um, and then as you'll hear more about in our, uh, in the next item, uh, the measured, uh, G, the, uh, revenue starts coming in April of this year. Um, and that was projected to be about seven hundred thousand, um, annually. So those are the pots of money, uh, that we'll be looking at, uh, moving forward and trying to, uh, coordinate some of these projects and kick some of them off. Um, and looking at some of the designs. Um, so just some kind of recommendations and, and an overall. Um, so just some kind of recommendations and and an overall summary of what we have in the update is. Uh, there's a fairly moderate need for some immediate pipe uh replacements. Uh, about ten percent of the of the system. Uh, and we anticipate this is gonna be ongoing. This is not. Fixes ten percent now and you're gonna be good in year six. This is, we're probably gonna be right back here again and, you know, you're six and maybe you're eleven. Um, and then we've identified that we, there's a significant rebuild of the city's pump stations that's recommended by our uh consultants. Uh, we need to have a more robust cleaning and inspection protocol. We need to be video inspecting these these pipe more frequently. Um, and then the thing I haven't really talked about, but it's still there, um, is we have trash capture requirements that are. We're in year four of a ten year mandate to uh keep trash out of our system and. Um, you know, that we've, we're working collaboratively with the county uh McStop. Um, and looking at projects that we can implement to satisfy these requirements and. Um, hoping there's gonna be some grants down the line to pay for some of these needs. Um, we're working on some of the preliminary design for what will take care of this. Um, but potentially, if there are no grants, there's another million dollar need um in trash capture uh for storm drains. And so that's uh the end of the presentation. And like I said, that is actually an action item. We do have a resolution for. Uh, you to consider to uh adopt the update to the plan. So um, available for any further questions.
Great. Thank you, Julian. Um. Once again, bringing it back to the council, any questions? I think Councilmember Carol, you said you had questions on pumps.
Yeah, earlier you'd mentioned um the previous one about. There being twenty thirty standards uh regarding cleaning the water. Is that? Part of the dra- trash capture or is that something? You know, like getting the road oils and salt, well, road oils here.
Yeah, so the trash capture is part of the overall clean water uh standards. So. Uh, there's a clean water permit that's issued every so often and it has a number of goals in there, a number of target dates for. Um, agencies to meet um items, the checkout boxes towards uh having the clean storm water. And so. Probably two hundred items on there. Um, and we're, you know, about forty percent of the way through this, through this plan. Um, and then uh the trash capture is the one that has the biggest dollar value for us. There's other things that we do. We go around and we do inspections to all our building sites to make sure that they have those. Kind of the straw waddles are called to go around the building site so that the runoff from the dirt doesn't uh get into the street. These are all. Things that are on our checklist of things to do over time and the trash capture is one of the things on that checklist for that um for that permit.
Okay.
Um, you mentioned, I'm just curious. When it's non-storm conditions, do we measure how much flow? I mean, do the pumps operate even when there's not storms because of? Uh, possibly spring water or uh well water coming into the system?
Um, they can, it kind of depends on where they are. Um. If we have an area that's tidally influenced and there's a way for, for instance, the summer king tides. Uh, to make their way into those storm drains on the backside of the pumps, then yes, it will kick the storm drain pumps on. As well as some of our normal higher tides. So. If we have storm drains that are old and they have leaks or they have joints that are apart and there's a way for the groundwater to get into those pipes. Uh, then yeah, those pipes, the water from those pipes will get into the pump stations and you will have uh a pump station operate in the. In the middle of July, based on tide water getting into your pipes.
Okay, and but non-tide water, just spring or well water, it's not an issue?
Uh, typically not. You're not gonna get enough accumulation to uh fill up and and trigger a a pump station. It's typically the, it's typically tidal related.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Julian, we have um. A lot of streets, at least in my experience, in this older part of town. That I would say are like unfinished. They don't have sidewalks. They don't have curbs. Uh, they do have storm drains, which are sort of uh along the edge of the pavement area. Um, like take my street, for example, there's no sidewalks, there's no curbs in the most part of it. And storm drains are constantly look like they are getting um debris onto them. Do, is there? Is there a way to try to mitigate those streets while we're doing the storm drain at the same time? Or is that a whole other engineering? Problem?
Um, I mean, there um, there are different methods depending on. Um, you know, whether a a street has culverts and and ditches or. Um, you know, whether on on some of the streets, it doesn't have curbs, but it informally. Has kind of a flat area of the road where the water flows and and will get in. Um, you know, it's, it's a similar issue. Um, you will have. You know, debris from a lawn or a front garden will hop over a curb and get into the gutter and end up in the storm drain, the same as it. Will in a neighborhood that doesn't have curbs. You just typically will have more of that debris if you don't have the curbs there because there's less of a. Definitive edge of the road and you'll have more occasions of people driving into that and tracking that debris. Onto the road. Um, you know, there. There are. Construction methods where there are the design ideas where they don't actually put curbs in on purpose. Uh, because what a curb will do is it'll concentrate the flow and get it to uh the storm drain quicker. And they actually purposely don't put curbs in and they have the grass go all the way to the end of the road and then the grass is slightly depressed and then. Um, actually, that helps the storm water get cleaned before it gets into those catch basins. So it's not necessarily a bad thing that. You don't have um, um, curbs. There's ways to do it. You just. Need to make sure there's a way to capture and clean the the water before it gets and and dumps all that debris and and you're great and, you know. Sometimes there's not, sometimes there's a wall right there, there's a hedge and you just don't have the the real estate.
Is that information that would be helpful for residents to report on on our website to the? Um, to the Public Works Department, like they report if there's a a traffic li- I mean, a. Street light out or something, would that be helpful information to know where those are getting congested?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody has a drainage concern, um, they should certainly reach out to us. Um, you know, typically, we'd have to look at the situation because in some cases it it's considered a frontage improvement and it would actually be the residence. Responsibility to make that improvement if it's not, you know, purely a a city water drainage. Um, issue. But yeah, if anybody has any concerns about drainage or what it's doing around their home or when it gets to the street, they can reach out to Public Works. Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Um, Julian, I had a a quick one. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking about, uh, you know, let's say. The the pump stations, you know, we've done Bon Air and we're gonna do Heatherwood and I'm, you know, trying to think of. Sort of the basic operation there. So there's, uh, I guess they're mostly pumps that are run by diesel. Uh, completely off the power grid. And um, are they electric? And and you know, so what's the power supply? And then. Maybe a little bit more technical is the actuator. So I'm assuming this is Councilmember Carol's point is. Is it's almost like a toilet, like if if the float bowl gets too low, it turns on the valve actuator to drain the water. And is that currently the pure design? Is you just go below a certain level and it starts working or or I'm I'm curious? Because they seem pretty primitive, you know, from seeing them on sometimes when there's no rain.
Right. Um. So, yeah, the, most of the pump stations that we have, I would say are pretty primitive and your toilet bowl analogy is. Parts pretty similar. I mean, basically, they have, um, they have a float. Um, so what happens is the store, all the storm drains, all the pipes in the neighborhood will go into a big, like it's called a wet well that's underground and it's a big storage tank. Um, so all of the pipes discharge into this big tank. And then the tank has um float switches on it. And if the water level in that tank, all the pipes are emptying in it, rises, uh, then the float switch will go on. Will rise and it will trigger a pump to come on. Um, there's more complex versions of that where there's multiple floats. Uh, if you have more than one pump, it'll trigger the second pump to come on to get the water out faster. Um, and then there's a float switch further down that when that float gets fully extended, it'll turn the pumps off. It's kind of the older technology. The pumps are on chains. They can get hung up. In fact, one of the things that we encounter in the winters, we have to go out and untangle the chains. Because a pump is either on or off because the floats aren't where they're supposed to be. Um, there's in the more uh modern, like you would see in our pump station rebuilds, they use transdu- transducers. So it's basically of of, you said it and it's, it's like a, like a light beam that detects where the water levels are. Um, and so it's not, it's not mechanical and you're able to set and adjust that. Much easier through a computer where those levels are, where you want the pumps to come on and come off. Um, and then um, as far as the power source, all of our pump stations at the moment are all um connected to the grid. Uh, they're all run by electricity. That's, that's the norm for their normal operation. They're very um. Very heavy power uh consumption. Um, most of them are four eighty, four hundred and eighty volts. A couple of them are only two forty. Um, and then a couple of them do have backup generators um that are diesel. Uh, but their primary oper- operation is uh electric.
And I guess that that's my my greater concern. Um, well, just one follow up question. So the priority one fixes that we're gonna vote on. Um, Heatherwood would be going to the modern design of transdu- transducers and so forth. And then the minor upgrades would be just take the ball and chains and stuff and make them so they don't break for a few years. Is is that about right?
Yeah, there's a few other things too. And I guess I just want to be clear. So in tonight's presentation, I'm asking you to adopt the update to the master plan. Uh, which lays out a a plan for us to consult when we come to you with the capital improvement program in future years. So. This, what this document is saying is this is what the city is gonna look at when I come forward to you with our next capital improvement program. I'm gonna use this to inform with the funding we have, what storm drain projects we're going to do. You're not approving us doing Heatherwood. Uh, with this action tonight, you're approving a plan that says, hey, Heather, it looks like Heather would should be one of your first considerations when you have funding and you. Come forward with your our capital plan.
I'd like to just chime in for a moment.
Yes.
We've told you numerous times that's, sorry, uh, also, you go close the door. The pump stations are actually a little different from the storm drains. We've told you about the storm drains. They're, they're not like the roads. We can't really accelerate the program and do all these storm drains in. In five years because of the nature of the work. The pump stations are a different matter and um. One of the things we'll bring you at a future item is potential financing options if we want to accelerate. Modernizing all the pump stations. That actually is something we could talk about. Maybe that's worth doing and we haven't had a chance to do that prioritization yet.
Okay, great. I see Councilmember Carol, let let me just finish. I I I'm gonna make this very brief. So maybe as a bookmark. Um, you know, I I didn't want to get into the anatomy of pump stations, but I'm I'm sort of. Uh, concerned about the power part. So I think Bon Air, we had a pretty long outage and if it's on the grid. I mean, that's, you know, a po- a point of failure, asking for trouble. So, you know, if you do have a storm, you may have power outage, then you don't have the drainage. So just, just, you know, to to get into that point when there's time.
Yep, so I'm gonna steal the comment here because I I want to emphasize this point. It's, it's not practical or environmentally appropriate to run diesel pump stations. Because you, they'd be running in times when you don't want them turning up diesel. Our backup emergency plan is to bring a diesel generator to a pump station and that's failed and. Uh, in the case of the Bon Air situation, that was new to us. That that particular location in the grid had never uh had not regularly had a failure as long as that. So we now have a new protocol and make sure that a diesel generator can be brought to that site. There's a hookup for it. All the pump stations can go on diesel in an emergency when the grid's no longer powering it. So they won't just sit idle.
Okay.
Um, but it's still much more appropriate to make them electric. Because there's a lot of times they're running that you, they're running just fine and you don't want all that additional diesel diesel fuel.
Yeah, no, that's that, that's a good answer. And then I'm sorry, one last one. Um, so. Uh, um, Julian, since you clarified, we're voting more on the framework, not on specific actions. Um, I I, I'm just trying to understand the twenty nineteen report. I mean, you know, should we see this update as? Essentially validating everything in the twenty nine report except for the edits and changes that you presented tonight.
Yeah, I mean, there's no real changes to anything that was presented in the twenty nineteen update, other than that table that we had of. Here's a list of projects that uh we should look at undertaking based on the capacity analysis that we did in twenty nineteen. Uh, we've provided an update on some of those projects that have been completed or moved into the update, but there's no, there's no other. Updates to what was presented in in the plan. It's all the new information on the condition. Um, of the pipes, uh, the new information on the uh pump stations. Uh, the only real update revision to the text would be an update of that list of projects.
Okay, so the the only thought, you know, I I went back to the twenty nineteen and there was a lot of engineering on. You know, meteorology and and, you know, soil and runoff. And for example, section three point four was, you know, the hydrological calculations of rainfall. And and, you know, I know three, four years isn't much, but but you don't see any need to revisit the essential modeling of of water flow through the city.
No, I, that is probably something that's on a twenty to twenty five year span to to reevaluate. Those numbers don't, don't really change.
Okay, thank you.
Julian, I wanted to clarify for the, so. One of the visions is those, we start doing inspections of the system regularly. So this shouldn't be a static document for three, four, five years, you know. Julian's department should be bringing you annual refinement of it because every year they'll have done. Some new inspections that might better inform the documents. So just like all our other. Documents, we're trying to get out of the deferred maintenance. World and get into the proactive maintenance world and that's gonna require investing in our studies like this, being. Constantly updated and constantly brought to you in the public so you understand the state of affairs.
Okay, thank you. And I think Councilmember Harof, you sounded like you were.
Oh, no, I'm ready to make a motion whenever.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Yeah, good.
Yeah, my only question is, uh, when you do come back to us later. I'd be interested in what the cost would be to put um. Backup generators in the pump stations that don't have them now. Because my concern would be if it's a large enough power outage. It could be very difficult and during not this year's storms, but last year stormed, I know in Sausalito, there were businesses that had to close. Because they just couldn't get a rented generator. You know, or the price of the generator sudden rental went up four or five times what its normal cost would be. Um, because of the shortage. So I just would like the information as part of the decision making process.
I can let the engineer go, engineer speaker. I can do this really quickly because I grilled him about this a couple of weeks ago, so I better understand it. Each pump station's designed to the physical space that it's occupying. And you have to make choices in those physical spaces and. For example, Mayor Paulson referenced the Bon Air Pump Station. There is no option to cite. A diesel generator at the pump station. So they built conduit so diesel generator can be attached. Offs uh over across the street in an emergency. Uh, and I don't know that their quality board would ever let us cite an above ground diesel generator in that location. If we could use eminent domain to take the property, we would need to take to do it. So that's why we opt for the. For the portable generator approach. So I've also quizzed him about, well, why don't we buy our own portable generator? So we have one. And the care and maintenance of those is is very high. So instead, we have contracts to make sure that we are prioritized for. For emergency generators. But I, we will come back. I'll make sure Julian takes pump station by pump station.
And just the recent development or all these uh electrical power wall. Is that practical? Given the power demand that they have. I'm asking the same questions. Okay.
No, they're good questions. I just chuckle because we we went through all this. Well, I'll let you explain that one.
Yeah, our consultant, we asked our consultant, um, this is part of looking at the pump stations and they verified that there's. Um, there's no practical battery backup alternative based on the draw that these pumps have. It's impractical. Um, the diesel pump is the industry standard for backup.
And they can't premount it on the roof.
Not very easily.
Great, uh, Councilmember Kendall, you look like you.
Uh, yeah, I just had one quick question, which was, uh, you said that this uh motion that we're doing now is not going to authorize any specific projects. The priority zero projects, are those already authorized and we're working on them at this point?
Yes, you authorized those back in October or November of last year with seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of ARPA money.
Thank you. Okay, so if we don't have any questions, I believe, uh, Councilmember Harof was wanting to move this. Oh, uh, yes. Oh, uh yes, thank you. Um so yeah, let's uh. Um see if there are any public comments. Uh Allison, do you seen anyone in Zoom? Okay, so uh bringing it back to the council. Yeah, I I. All right, um I believe someone was wanting to move this.
I I'd be happy to move adoption of resolution twelve twenty-three.
Okay, do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Second, Allison roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Great, so this passes unanimously and thank you, Julian. Uh thank you for tutoring us on the subtleties of. Of pump stations and so forth. Um so the next item on the agenda eight point two is to establish the measure G fund. And assign citizen oversight committee responsibilities for measure G to the existing committee that oversees measure B. Uh so if we could have a staff report, please.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I thought it was appropriate to bring this item when Julian brought the update because as the council knows, um. A big reason we asked voters to trust us with measure G's stewardship is because we know we have these ongoing needs. Particularly in the area of storm drains um and dealing with storm water. So um. Now that measure G is passed, it's time to do some housekeeping. And one of the first things is to prepare for. Uh those revenues to start to be received by the city. Um they'll be collected beginning April first at the registers uh and online and then um. We'll start to see them here as revenue from the state in June. So one of the actions we're asking you to do is to create a fund that's devoted to measure G and that. Uh practice is a practice we do. It's not a required uh practice, but uh by creating a fund, it. Creates very clear transparency of where those dollars are and where they're going. And that's what we want to do so that folks can easily uh look up. How we're using this particular pot of money. Um the other action is uh you are required by the ordinance that you passed that put this on the ballot. That you would create a citizen oversight committee. We're recommending here that you assign it to the existing committee and rebrand it as the sales tax oversight. Uh citizens oversight committee. Uh you have a very um robust oversight committee for measure B. They're very active. I haven't asked them, but I suspect they're gonna say yes if asked to take on this added responsibility. The alternative would be to create a second committee, but it creates some inefficiencies and requires a lot more um staffing and I. I I have the count councils heard me say this many times. In some respects, this is my toughest assignment. These folks grill me. And grill Julian uh into great detail so that they can feel comfortable making a recommendation for you that the money's being spent appropriately. And I feel confident they will take up that challenge for measure G with the same uh. Zeal that they take up that challenge for measure B.
Uh when when someone gets on that oversight committee, what term are they agreeing to to serve for?
So when we created the committee originally, we didn't have terms and then the council, I'll have to double check, but I think it was a five-year term was this was established. And we probably get close to where we'll have to ask folks if they want to be uh reappointed to the committee. Um we've only. Since measure C, we've only had one oversight committee member, I think, who's actually. Ever resigned because they other things drew them away, but. Um like I said, these these are all folks very interested in our city finances and very interested in um our infrastructure investment. So. They they do take this role very seriously. They have two, they they actually adopted some bylaws. They have two mandatory. Uh two fixed meetings. Uh they meet in December and April. The December meeting is to look at the audit and the April meeting is to. Review the city manager's recommendations for the use of the money before your budget consideration. However, they do occasionally call extra uh call extra meetings when it's timely or topical. And we've asked them to call meetings, particularly if if uh public works wants to update them about uh a program that's being funded by the. By the uh measure, so.
Okay, um so any questions for the city manager? Yes.
It's always a good idea to volunteer other people when they aren't here. I've learned that lesson the hard way. Um but it just. One of the things that um I did question. Um before the meeting was, uh I would like to see it a little more accessible and and any reports that they issue be more accessible on the front page of the. Uh website because I think that's. Uh needed commitment to the community, especially since. Uh there has been kind of some controversy about this. I think it's important we be put it literally on the front page. Or one click away from it so that uh people understand what's going on. And from what I understand, Allison's already been attached with. Um redesigning or upgrading.
The entire website's being uh upgraded and and so Allison's the project manager as uh. For that and uh I saw a I saw a graphic the other day. Looks uh it's like. It's a lot more streamlined. They're working hard, the company that we use to make it more friendly across every device, right? You know, that's sort of the trend.
Yeah.
Um so and I think one of the big things that uh Shannon O'Hare did before she. Uh went on her leap, apparently um. She uh insisted they change the search because the internal search has been a criticism. So. I understand Google search will be the search on the new website, which I'm told will improve finding things even more.
Great, thank you.
What's it gonna watch?
I think we'll probably come to give you an update uh when we do the next communication program update. So um. I'll have to consult with Allison and see if I can wrangle a date out of Shannon uh when she comes up for air.
Great. Any other questions? I don't need that. Um great, so uh let's open it up for public comments. Uh does anybody? Uh in Zoom land have any comment, Allison?
I'm looking for any raised hands and there's no public comment.
Okay. So if there isn't any public comment and no other council questions, I'll entertain a motion to pass eight point two or to move eight point two rather.
Uh I will move eight point two.
Okay. Great, uh Allison, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell?
Yes.
Mayor Paulson.
Yes. Thank you. And with that, we are done with our business items and we're at adjournment. So uh. Let us adjourn unless anyone opposes. Okay, good night, everybody, and we'll see you at our next meeting, March first. Have a good night.